Senator Donald M Manglonya. Senator Dennis C. Mandiola. Madam Chair, three members are present, one member is absent.
Thank you, Mr. Makaranas. With three members present, we have established the necessary quorum to conduct today's meeting. Next up on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. For the record, the notice and the agenda for today's meeting was issued on April twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three in compliance with Public Law eight dash forty-one or the Open Government Act. I would like to recognize Senator Donald Manglonya for the proper motion to adopt today's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the adoption of today's agenda.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded. Are there any questions or concerns on the motion? Ready? All those who favor, please say aye. All those who oppose, please say nay. The ayes have it, today's agenda is duly adopted. Next stop, I would like to invite Mr. Oscar Babata, the Special Assistant for Administration under the administration of Governor Arnold I. Palacios and Lieutenant Governor David M. Apatang, and the nominee, Mr. Simon A. Sanchez, to join us in the chamber. Mr. Babata's role here is to formally introduce the appointee to the EAGI Committee. And, Mr. Babata, you are free to begin when you're ready.
Sisus Masi, Madam Chairwoman, Senator Selena Roberto Babata, dan lokrii mangatugnu, niman gayi yini, and the esteemed members of your EAGI Committee. Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity again to appear before you and your august body EAJ Committee. For the record, my name is Oscar Babata, the Special Assistant for the Administration for the Office of the Governor on behalf of Governor Arnold I. Palacios and that of Lieutenant Governor David M. Apatang. I thank you for the opportunity again, once more, to appear before you today. I'm here to introduce the Governor's nominee for the Commonwealth Utility Board of Directors, Mr. Simon A. Sanchez. And more so, I wish to express our demonstrations' deep appreciation for him traveling from Guam to join us this afternoon for this public hearing, vetting him for the position of a board member of our Commonwealth Utility here in the CNMI. Mr. Sanchez is a professional with over forty-three years of experiences in working both in the private sector and public sectors. His career started in nineteen eighty when he became the Public Finance Officer of the Guam Economic Development Authority, while at the same time serving on the boards for the Guam Memorial Hospital, Guam Visitors Bureau, and of course, Guam Chamber of Commerce. In nineteen eighty-five, Mr. Sanchez became the Vice President for the Guam Public Utility, where he served in that position for nine years before being elected as a senator for the Guam Legislature in nineteen ninety-eight, a colleague of yours a few years ago, where he altered thirty-three public laws related to health, elections, government budgets, and public finances. He is also a business manager since nineteen eighty-one, managing various businesses related to commercial laundry, equipment trading, and radio broadcasting. You are a DJ once in a while. In addition, Mr. Sanchez has been a member of the Guam Consolidated Commission on Utilities since two thousand and three, and he wants to serve as a chairman, where his faces appear daily on PDN and GuamPost. Mr. Sanchez received his Bachelor of Arts in History at Stanford University in nineteen seventy-eight, Master Degree in Planning at Harvard University in nineteen eighty. Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apatang places their full trust and confidence in the likes of Mr. Simon Sanchez to serve in our Commonwealth Utility Corporation Board of Directors. He now stands ready to answer any of your inquiry that you present to him this afternoon, and also his plans for our Commonwealth Utility Corporation in the CNMI. His long history of professional services and experiences, credentials, and commitment to serving the Commonwealth in this capacity makes him a very, very viable candidate. And we kindly ask for your expeditious approval, Madam Chair and members of the EAGI Committee. Once again, thank you, Sisus Masis, and Galiso, to all of you for the opportunity to officially introduce him to this august body this afternoon. Thank you again, and I wish him good luck. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sisus Masi, Mr. Babata. We now move to public comments. And if there is anyone who wishes to speak on behalf or testify in support of or against Mr. Simon Sanchez, I ask that you please come up to the podium, state the organization you represent. And if you have any written comments, you may submit it to the Sergeant-at-Arms. Thank you.
My name is Gary Sword, K K M P Radio. Simon is my cousin, our mothers are sisters. And so, we just wanted another Simon to come over here in the Commonwealth and be with us. Anyways, his resume is already before you, he's had a very, very deep understanding of utilities, has a long history with utilities, has a long history of being a businessman, which brings a lot to the table when they're dealing with utilities, because this is one of the biggest costs of a business, and it can drive a business out of business if your power utilities continue to be unaffordable. But I think the thing that I know about Simon and him is he bring common sense. Things that need to be done in an easy and cost-effective and environmentally effective manner is how he works. And with that, we do need a lot of that in our utilities right now. And he's going to bring a lot. They've gone through it in Guam, and they've overcome their problems, they've overcome their hardships. Also, my cousin here, he's got a degree from Stanford in history, so that he doesn't forget what happened, and you only make the mistake once, otherwise my Auntie Flo's gonna grab him by the neck. And then he also has a master's degree in planning, which is good, so he doesn't make the same mistake again, and make the plan good and make it work. Madam Chair and the members of the committee, I stand here with my cousin here and ask that you give him your vote of confidence to be the next member of the C U C Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sword. The floor is still open. If there are none, we will close the public comments portion at this time. Moving right along. I will now open the floor for Mr. Simon Sanchez. If you have any opening statements, you may also introduce any family members you have here present in the chamber.
Sisus Masi, Madam Chair, Babata, Senator Manglonya, Paul, and Senator Manglonya, Donald, I think, first time I've met you, I've known Senator Paul since he had darker hair, and I had hair, so. My Magasfu, Yasegual Silu Sanchez is with me here. We both share a long passion and love for the CNMI. We have done business here for many, many years and made many, many friends. And we know that there are good people here, facing challenges that are faced by many communities, not just Guam, not just the CNMI, but you can look around the world and there's challenges everywhere, but I have tremendous confidence in the ability of the people of the CNMI to solve problems, work together. We've been in similar movies in Guam and here in the CNMI. I was first hired or elected, and of course, we have an elected commission, and I understand there may be some debate about considering that model. And we had had a Governor's Appointed Legislative Confirmed Board for many, many years. But we went to an elected board, and I was elected in two thousand and two, so I've been on the the CCU for over twenty years. This is my sixth term. We serve four-year terms. And I was chairman for the first twelve years, but the day after I was elected, I got a call from the U.S. Attorney there, and he said, "We want to put the Water Works Authority under receivership." And I said, "Why don't you work with a new governance, an elected board, and let us see if we can figure out how to, you know, resolve these issues?" Because you know, all of us, whether it's a CNMI or Guam, we can run our own power system, we can run our own energy system. We can run our own water and wastewater system. It's not a space program. It does require hard work and some difficult decisions. But I, and twenty years ago, the hospital hadn't paid its power bill, the government of Guam was way behind on its power bill. But twenty years later, the hospital is current, the government of Guam is current, the residential community is current, the commercial community is current. People are, even though it's difficult, you know, and oil is the biggest challenge to energy costs here in this region. People have found a way to prioritize the payment of their bill, but in exchange, you know, we owe them good service. We wear two hats in the community. We are both the owners of these utilities, as well as the customers. And of course, as customers, you know, we want free power and don't have to pay for anything, but as owners, we know that's not going to work. Oil's not free. Transformers are not free, generators are not free, labor's not free. And so, how do we strike that balance in finding the resources and making sure those resources are applied correctly and wisely? And that's the immediate challenge of the C U C here, is to run these entities, knowing that even though they're appointed and they're confirmed, they still represent, as you do, the shareholders, the owners, the people of this community, whose money is tied up in these assets, seeking good service at the lowest price possible. Last summer, the General Manager of the Guam Power Authority, John Beneventi, did a small study, a small analysis for the preceding administration about the potential for, and ideas for reducing the cost of power here. And I reviewed it, and I'll share it here with the committee as well as with the C U C and the governor. But there is a wonderful opportunity to combine conventional energy with solar energy here. And I understand at the C U C meeting, I attended, you know, I observed, I didn't participate, but I observed that they're already beginning to talk about how can they bring solar energy at a utility scale. You have some folks already with it on their houses, right? But for many people, you know, individual solar is expensive, right? Even with the tax credits that are available. And so, it is the job of the bigger utility to provide access to solar energy or renewable energy at a macro level, at a utility scale level, for those that just aren't going to be able to put a solar array on their roof. And there's no magic bullet. I'm not here to say that we can fix things overnight, but I was very encouraged by the study that says we can probably put ten to twenty megawatts of renewable energy on the Saipan grid. And you need about forty acres for every ten megawatts. And the sweet spot is if you can come up with eighty acres for twenty megawatts, that's where the economies of scale can really benefit, particularly the island of Saipan. I haven't had a chance to look at Tinian or Ota, but at least theoretically, there's a sweet spot for the combination of solar energy with conventional energy. And you know, some people say, "Well, you should go to a hundred percent renewable today." There's, there is one place in the world that is a hundred percent solar, and it's a small island next to our home island in American Samoa. But a hundred percent solar, it's sixty-five cents a kilowatt hour, twice what you're paying here. So, yeah, technology will let you do it, right? But can you afford the technology? And really, it's an idea of riding the technology curve up while you ride the price curve down. Solar energy batteries are getting cheaper and cheaper and cheaper. You can definitely create solar energy on a competitive level. The problem is, when it gets dark at night, right, what do you do? And you need batteries. And batteries are not yet economic, but they are quickly coming to become more and more economic. And so, in Guam, we've done two things. We have modernized our We have modernized our conventional generator, and we did it because the older generators, which were built in the 70s, you know, the challenge of renewable energy is when the good Lord brings cloud cover over a solar array, then you lose some generation capability. And, you know, we have a 60-meg solar farm and a 25-meg solar farm, and what we've learned is if a cloud cover comes over, you know, that part of the island, you can lose 5, 10, 15 megawatts in seconds, right? And then it can come back, you know, two minutes later. And a battery is what helps stabilize that, or a generator that is, that is able to deal with fluctuations in energy on the grid, that's what you need. The generators we have in Guam, built in the 70s, they're not designed to do that. So we had to invest in a new generator that is able to be more, the first thing is it's more fuel efficient. When our new generator is turned on in a year, we will reduce the amount of oil we use by 1 million barrels a year. And, and that's, that's going to really help us bring down the cost of energy. So one of the things I'll be curious about is to see, with your conventional generation, are they the right kinds of generation mix that would allow you to add more renewables? So far, solar is the best choice for Guam, and of course, we, we follow a model where we say, we let the private sector bid. They can bid any technology they want. And since they're taking the risk, they're all bidding solar. Solar is something they know better, plus we have typhoons. That's why you don't see wind, right? It's just too risky to put a wind farm up, and they're even more land-intensive than solar farms. But, but so we found great success with solar capability at the utility scale level as well as at the individual level. And when I read the study, and I think when you see it, it's obvious to, to our team in Guam, that it can be duplicated here, you know? And if we can get into more utility-scale solar with storage, it will also create some capacity that we can look at the generation you have on the different islands and say, "How can we get them, are they the best fit if we want to add more renewables?" Because what is the cause of higher energy costs? It's oil. And the less oil you burn, the lower your energy costs will be, whether it's at the gas station or on the power grid. And when you put up solar, you have to not just invest in, on the generation side, your grid has to also learn to speak renewables, where energy is not steady, 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 like the old days where you just turn on the engine and it runs steady, but where you have some energy sources. First, you have more than one, you know? In the old days, you have two or three generators, you know where they're located, that's where 100% of the power comes. In Guam, we have almost 3,000 solar arrays on 3,000 different houses all over the place. Our utility scales are not all in one place. And so now you have a grid that doesn't have 11 generators, it has 3,002 generators, two of which are big solar farms, and 3,000 are on people's houses. And so your grid has to also be able to speak renewables and speak to what they call the intermittency of renewables. Unlike a car engine, when you turn it on, it runs steady RPM, solar doesn't work that way, even wind. The good Lord doesn't, you know, he, he's in charge of the weather, and it's not always consistent. But there is an approach that I'm very confident can be duplicated here, and I'm actually quite excited to see how we can duplicate it here, because I think the, the benefit to your community is, is going to be huge. We, both Guam and the CNMI, we send way too much money off to Singapore to buy the oil, and, and those days can come to the end. And it takes a steady commitment to doing it. We would encourage a look at public-private partnerships. When I was hired, we, not only was one entity supposed to be put under receivership, like you've just experienced, the prior administrations' leadership, they all left, and then we had to come up with brand-new leadership. And this was right after Typhoon Pong San Wah, we were hiring people in the dark, you know, under candlelight. So, you know, we, we understand the challenges of, of not having a perfect system while you try to, why to try to make it better. But the, by bringing in good talent, I've been speaking to the governor and some of the folks on the C U C, if we can find some local talent, local engineering that would be interested in learning to run a system, I mean, that would be the first preference if we can find someone. Otherwise, you may have to consider outsourcing the management, maybe for a short period of time, to kind of help you with these solutions that are available. I promise you this, if I'm allowed to serve, that, even if I'm not the confirmed, at GPA, we have the templates for bidding for solar energy, public-private partnerships. We know how to do it, we've been very successful at doing it. We have a billion dollars' worth of generation and solar farms using other people's money, a private partner who will build and operate it for 25 years, and then we own it after 25 years. And in our case, we've completed some of those agreements, and we've just hired that same partner to keep running our asset that we now own. But it's proven to be an excellent model that I think we can do, because, you know, you're using other people's money. The people of Guam didn't have to come up with a billion dollars for that new generator and that new solar farm, our partner did. Now, we promised to pay them over 25 years and buy it back from them, and they will build and operate it. So they bear all the risk, which means they want to build it quickly, they want to build it efficiently, and they don't make any money till that solar farm or that generator is selling a megawatt to the people of Guam through the Guam Power Authority. And that partnership has worked very, very well. I've already had folks in Guam saying, "I understand you're coming here." Would they be interested in public-private partnerships? Some of the bidders for the solar bids that we've put out in Guam, that they're looking up here, they're going, you know, what can be done? I know land tenureship is different, right? But at least in my brief discussions, if we can find 40 to 80 acres of land, that would be easy to commit to a project, then your, then your procurement is just to have a private partner, you know, the government will provide the land, the private partner will then build the array, the solar array on it and operate it, and then you can buy it back, or, even when I first joined the CCU in Guam, I said, you know, "Do you even have to own generation?" You know, and we islanders were proud, you know, hey, this is our island, we want to own it. But sometimes, you know, you can, outsourcing is okay if you get the right partner and you have good management to watch the partner, and you have good procurements that hold that bidder, you know, properly to their commitment and make sure that they meet their commitment. But it's another way to bring capital into the solution set that isn't an immediate burden on your ratepayers. You're using other, other people's money, paying them back over time, using their expertise, because expertise is, it's hard on Guam too to find capable people. But if you have a private partner, they can look further along, they're, they're not hamstrung by, you know, government hiring limitations, which sometimes is, is a limitation, makes it more difficult. So that, that's a model that I'd be very interested to see if we could consider it here, because I think it can provide solutions. And, and so as I said, I'll, I'll give the, a copy of Mr. Beneventi's report to the committee and for the Senate and the House to take a look at and give it to the governor and the C U C. But I'm very optimistic that we can, we can improve what's going on here. We need, we will need some help from the governor and the legislature. You know, the hospital owed money 20 years ago, and, and I think it's similar here, you know, twice a year, the Utility Commission and then the Public Utility Commission, which I know you're having trouble staffing even that piece, but twice a year, we adjust the fuel rate, right? And, and we just lowered ours, actually, we just lowered ours to your rate. Your rate was lower for a while, because for three years, we didn't pass on $47 million of oil costs to, to the people of Guam, because it was COVID, and it was just, you know, people were unemployed, it was just a tough time. So, but GPA was strong enough financially because of the decisions we had made over the last 20 years, that we could kind of, you know, dip into the kids' college fund, pay for the oil, and then we, the, the ratepayers now having to pay back the owners, the us ratepayers have to put that money back. And so our LEAC, or we call it the LEAC, you, you call yours the Fuel Adjustment Charge, but they both have an AC in it, right? And the last letter stands for charge, right? So it's the, it's the same. So we have finally recovered all of that, so we lowered our LEAC now, it's now below yours. And when the new generator comes on and we knock another million barrels a year of oil that we're no longer going to be sending money off, our people's money off to Singapore, we're really going to accelerate the savings. And then the new generator can handle more renewables. And I, I am firmly convinced that that scenario can happen here. And hopefully, it won't take 20 years, but, you know, 20 years later, the hospital's current, Guam is current, people are current. I mean, it's sort of, you know, we realize it's, it's sort of like the mortgage or the rent, right? I mean, you, if you need to house your family, that's got to be the, one of the first things you got to pay, right? And then you can't miss it. But I know times are tough here, and it's gonna, you know, you're already going through some, I think, 72-hour work weeks and, or work, work periods, or, and it's, it's a challenge, and, and we all need tourism to come back to put some of that money back into our coffers. But I think there's ways to, to resolve it. We, we worked out payment plans with the hospital and the government in the early years, and, but they have to be realistic. But I think the biggest piece for me is the oil piece. You know, in Guam, it's about six, two-thirds of the, of the, of your power bill is for oil, one-third is for everything else, right? And, but it's, whether you have a new car or an old car, if you can't buy the gas, it ain't going to go anywhere, right? So as we look at the hospital's challenge, it might be sitting down with, with you and them and, and saying, "Okay, how do we recover at least the part that pays for the gas," right? Because you got to be able to buy the gas, or it doesn't, or not only will the, you know, it won't be a matter of shutting down the hospital, the power company will shut down, and then everybody's in trouble, and nobody wants that, right? So, but I think, you know, you work, work together, work hard, and, and, you know, it's, I often think of it where if you ever, you have to lose weight and, and you're, you try not to get diabetes, do you yell at your doctor? You know, I mean, sometimes you just say, "Well, that's the medicine, I got to do better." You know, that's sort of self-discipline, because when the CCU was first created, that first rate increase, we, we already had a senator saying, "I want to get rid of the CCU." You know, and, and I mean, that, that is, that's, that is a response, you, you could do that, but all that does is move the burden from that group back to your group, right? And as my colleague Joey Duenez likes to say, the current chairman, "If, if you want to know who to blame, the list is long and distinguished." All right, so now, how do we fix it? You know, and, and that list is also, you all get to be distinguished members of that list of fixing it and, and being committed to fixing it. But I'm confident you can do it. I'm excited about if you're, if you give me the opportunity to serve, joining the commission and offering ideas and ways to think about solving the problem. And I'm confident that you can solve the problem. You can, you can make it better for your children and especially your grandchildren. I tease my grandkids, I said, "Man, you know, we're like two generations late, but, you know, it's, it's going to be better for them, it's going to be better for your children and grandchildren if we make the challenging decisions now and stay with it." In Guam, I, you know, having been in the legislature, and I teased my former fellow colleagues, I said, "Let us worry about power and water, you guys work on world peace," all right? And, and, and yet, you still have to have oversight, you still have to watch what's going on. Maybe an elected board will work better in the sense that they're not, they're really beholden to the same people that elect, elect you to, to office. But if, but if a governor or a member of the legislature says, after that first rate increase, "Get them out of here," well, that's sort of the movie we used to be in in Guam. It's, it's a bit of a movie, at least I've heard, I don't know how accurate it is, I haven't seen the, the public auditor was alleged to have said that there was rate increases that were then canceled by the legislature. And that's, that's a trade-off, but it often doesn't, may not produce the results you want of avoiding, you know, trying to, like diabetes, trying to eat better and exercise more and, and not, not take the medicine that, that is prescribed to you. And sometimes taking medicine is terrible and doesn't make you feel so good, but if it leads, leads to a better outcome down the road, that, that's the goal. And so Governor Palacios is a classmate of mine from the Father Duenez Mafia, and he, he was also a defuncto C speaker Ben Panglinen, also a classmate. So our ties to the CNMI go way, way back, and I've been honored to, to serve with one and now see a fellow friar trying to lead his community to a better place. And I've known Senator Paul from many, many years, and, and, you know, the goodwill is here, the intelligence is here, it's just willing to make sometimes the tough calls and endure the talk show hosts and, and the comments at the matay, and, you know? But when you know you're doing the right thing for the right reasons, you try to stay with it. So I'll try to offer that perspective, should you find it fit to appoint me to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Your appointment could not have come at a better time. You are fortunate that this committee also has the chairperson of the Public Utilities Telecommunications Committee here, Senator Paul Magalotnia, and the Chair of the Health, Education, and Welfare, Senator Donald Magalotnia. So I think the harder questions are going to come actually from Senator Paul.
Oh, there's going to be hard questions? I think the questions are easy, the answers sometimes are hard.
It's more the work that's harder to do, right? I kind of switched the order of the agenda today, but I would like to make a statement of why we are here today. Today, we will evaluate your credentials, your work experience, as you know, because you were appointed by Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apotang to serve as a board member of C U C. And this is our democratic process of going through the vetting process, and it will also determine, this committee will make the recommendation whether to confirm or reject your nomination, and that is why we are here today. Your nomination, like I said, comes at a turbulent financial crisis or predicament in the entire CNMI government, actually, but most especially over the last week or week alone at Commonwealth Utilities Corporation. I'm sure you've been keeping tabs on and reading the articles that have come out on the papers. Each member of this committee has an obligation to ask questions of vital concerns to the community and to the committee itself. And then now we will move on. I will ask the other members if they have any other statements at this time. If not, we will... Does anybody have questions or, I mean, statements? No? Okay, we will move on to the question part of the...
I just have a short statement.
Sure.
Because I have no question for today, but prior to the hearing, we have to sign off on a document that we don't have conflict with any of the nominees, and I indicated so, but I just want to declare that I've known the gentleman, Mr. Senator Sanchez, for many years, and I just want to say that the late brother, Tony Sanchez, was my glad friend, a father of greatness.
He said, "I'm rhythm mafia."
God bless you, so, my, my good friend. But, but we all know, I guess, Simon, Senator Sanchez, we really want to thank you for, for accepting this appointment, and I know probably the governor, Puyo Arm, know and...
Yet incriminating, yet incriminating photos of me and Senator Ben, Speaker Ben, so...
So really, as the chair said, you couldn't have come at a better time. We really need your help, and I guess you know the situation here in, in the CNMI, and I know that we're blessed with your expertise, your experience, and I don't know how a guy with a history background know ever become an expert in, in utilities, now, but I, I know you can do anything. And again, Sisus Massey from our people for accepting this nomination. I know I was, I, I supported the legislation, actually, that included an additional member from off-island with professional background, and I always believed that the CNMI can benefit from, from other places' experience. And so I'm glad we passed that law, and we're always very appreciative of the sacrifices and the experience they bring to our island. So thank you, and to your wife Lu also, Sisus Massey, for allowing the senator to be coming back and forth in the year, and after that, thank you.
Well, you know, Senator, we, we all know what the definition of an expert is, someone from 100 miles south, right? But really, the expertise is here. It's, you know, you, when one plus one is two in Guam, and it's two here in the CNMI. Now, sometimes in the legislature or in the governor's chamber, it's two and a half or one and three-quarters, you know, and, or zero, you know? But, you know, but, but where's the commitment to, to solve it? And, and, you know, without energy and without water, you, you don't have the CNMI, you don't have Guam, right? So, and, and I'm not familiar enough yet, but I really want to look at the water challenges, right? And I know you're under consent decrees, where GPA has a consent decree, GWA has finished, it's a consent decree, but on the fourth floor of every EPA office in every district, you know, in the region 1 through 9, it's the litigation floor, and all they do is write up another consent decree. So you don't always look at it... So you don't always look at it as a consent decree as, oh, man, we screwed up again. It's just, that's what that floor does. Okay, here's your new list. So we've, we're finished, GWA is finishing the first list from 20 years ago. And we have a new list and GPA has a new list, but that includes the new generator. That includes bringing on more renewables. And GWA has, we, at GWA, we spent $900 million over a 20-year period. And and that's how, that's how long it's gonna take, because your, our community can't handle, you know, you can't do. When we first negotiated the consent decree with the federal side and EPA, they wanted it done in 10 years. I said, you're gonna price water beyond the reach of people. So even the solutions that we come up with and how we pay for those solutions. And and, you know, let's face it, we were taking money from one pocket and the other pocket. It's still sort of, it's still the people's money and they only have so much money, right? And and so how do you, your biggest challenge is how do you balance all of those needs and and still produce the outcomes? And and it won't, it won't be easy and it it may, it may be painful at some time. But, um, and I was, I was struck by the similarities of when I joined the CCU 20 years ago. GMH hadn't paid his bills, Gov Guam was way behind. But I'm here to tell you that 20 years later, we we collectively made better decisions. The governor, the legislature, the CCU, the management of the utilities, we made better decisions together. And the, and that, you know, I'm an elect, re-elected six times despite raising rates, you know. And and, you know, and at the Mati's, boy, we rarely spoke about the one that was deceased. We were all saying, Mr. Sanchez, could you help me with our power bill, right? So we understand. Uh, but, uh, you know, if we could snap our fingers, it'd be fixed already, but we can't. You're you're all serving because you realize there's things you want to help fix in in the CNMI, but it's not gonna happen overnight. You have to do it collectively. Maybe I can be a small contribution to one part of the puzzle while you all work on world peace and 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 full employment. And, you know, all those things and everybody, you know, every, more wants than the ability to, you know, to provide. And but that's the challenge of of governance in a in a democracy. And and you have the toughest job. Uh, but just just stay with it, just stay with it. That's all I can tell you. And I I'm honored to be considered and I I'm excited about the opportunities that I see here. And let's see if we can, we've pulled it off 100 miles to the south and 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 yet we still have work to do. And I think we can, we can do better here and and we will do better if we just work together.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Before we direct any question asked, that you please rise and raise your right hand. And I will recognize the LA to administer the oath.
Mr. Simon A. Sanchez, you do solemnly swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you shall give in the matter at hand shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you.
Maybe seated, thank you. I will now recognize any of the members if they wish to be the first to answer questions. I will recognize at this time Senator Donald Manglona.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome to the CNMI, Mr. Sanchez. Um, well, first of all, thank you for such a collaborative remarks. I mean, seems like you cut it down our questions by 50%, maybe even more. Um, you did bring up a lot of things that I wanted to talk about. And, uh, you know, it was funny because right before you came in, I was reading the article that was sent to me regarding, I think it's called Tao or the village that you mentioned in American Samoa, which is 100% um, uh, on solar energy. And, you know, it was an idea that was brought up because I think if, you know, we wanted to do research as to how this could be um, kind of replicated on Rota or maybe even Tinian and try to see what the 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 savings would be if that was to be considered. And so I hope that's something that, you know, if confirmed, it's something that we can continue to look for, um, forward to and try to understand more and and do more research about that. I'm trying to understand your resume, um, you know. Well, first off, I just want to say that, um, everything that was mentioned about you and by you, um, you know, is is gives me the confidence to fully support your your nomination. But just for the the people watching and to understand and and know you more, because, uh, you know, there's not much history about you in the CNMI. It's, what are you, are you currently doing on Guam? And it's kind of mixed on your resume, but what what's your current?
So I've been in in private business for many, many years. I I actually worked for the governor of Guam for just the first year. I I got out of Harvard, couldn't get a job in the mainland and my dad said, come home. And then I worked with the Guam Economic Development Authority and we issued the first public financing in the region. And so I was the the young officer. So I became very familiar with public finance, how to float a bond, how to do debt service coverage, how to have the cash flow to do coverage. Uh, but and then I went in, I've been in the broadcast business. I I left the government after one year because I was more entrepreneurial and and saw and was given an opportunity. So I left the government after one year and I I helped start what became K-57 Radio on Guam. And I was the station manager and I went from the first owner to the to the longtime second owner. But I've spent most of my career working with Philip Flores. Um, he is the grandson of former Governor Joseph Flores, the first Chamorah-born governor, I guess, in the region. And, uh, he has, uh, he's in the banking business. We have a small lending company. I've primarily been running a laundry. Uh, we used to have a small laundry here. Uh, we shut it down in 2013 as as the economy grew weaker. Uh, but it was it was a sad day because we had bought the company from our predecessor, had been here since the 70s. And but in 2013, uh, we we shut it down. But that, I I was coming here on a regular basis. That's how I got to meet Senator Paul so early. So I've been primarily running a laundry, but we also are a trading company. Uh, we, in fact, we sold a a CT scan to the CHC Hospital about 11 years ago. So, uh, we've been selling, uh, we used to represent Siemens and other suppliers. So I've done that. I I run a laundry. We got real estate that we we manage. Uh, then I've been in in the legislature. I I, you know, I've been voted in and out of office, so I I understand and back in. So I I understand the trade offs that you you'll be faced with, right? Um, but I I just find, just be honest with your people and then they'll, they'll make the decision on their own. But yeah, I've just, I've had a lot of private sector experience. Uh, I've been 20 years, 20, it's my 21st year on the CCU. And, uh, it's the sixth, I'm entering my sixth term. And I've I've been there from the beginning. Uh, so I, Senator Michael, you know, Paul brought me the the proposed legislation. You may look at a citizen board and and as, you know, and and it it can work if 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 it's given the independence. As I said, the the first rate increase we granted, we had a senator trying to repeal the law already. And and I mean, that, you know, that's a, that, you can look at it that way, but it, uh, but you 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 want to attract good people and and give them the independence. Otherwise, you know, you already have which you've already got, right? And, uh, respect that independence, right? And then if the people vote them out, you know, it's no different than shareholders voting in a different board of directors, right? But whether it's an elected board or an appointed board, particularly in a small community, we're, you know, we, we're both the owners and and the customers. You know, so, you know, they teach you in business, you know, you you can't own a business and then walk through the store and say, I want that for free. I want that for free. I want that for free, right? And and that's, you know, that's sometimes I'm I'm over-exaggerating a misperception. But sometimes that is a perception that, you know, why, why can't I just get it for much lower than than somebody else, right? And you have issues of subsidies. In Guam, the commercial sector subsidizes the residential sector. But I understand here, even the government is subsidizing the residential sector. So one issue that we might want to look at is, I'm, I'm not sure the last time we did a cost of service study. But let's at least do another one for every island and find out what does it cost to serve government load, uh, residential load, commercial load. And then once you have a look at that, then you can decide who, if anyone, should cross subsidize, right? Because when money's tight, cross subsidies from anybody is a challenge. But in Guam, the commercial sector cross subsidizes the government and the residential. Uh, government, a little bit of residential, commercial does a little bit to both. The residential rate is 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 a little lower than it should be. Uh, the commercial rate is a little higher than it should be, but particularly when we had tourism, uh, we realized, hey, we're exporting, you know, Guam would get a million, a million seven visitors. We're exporting some of that power bill because the hotels are paying the power bills while they're paying the power bills with the money of the visitors. And so that that's another way to to say, well, let's have the commercial sector subsidize residential because they get to charge visitors, uh, for their po- for the power that they generate, um, or they consume. And 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 that can benefit the residential community. But but you need the data. You need to say, okay, what is the true cost of service? And then should you subsidize or not? Because subsidies have trade offs, right? And and that, I I think you face, you face that every day in your work now, is trade offs.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Actually, I was just trying to understand your 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 current work status to understand your availability and and stuff like that. Um, so you are still with like Oka Pacific and so on.
I'm I'm primarily with Guam Dry Cleaners right now and and I spend most of my time there, but I have a good team. And, uh, I wouldn't have taken on the commitment without it, without the, you know, my partners, you know, my partner does business here at at Guam, at Bank Pacific. So he has a vested interest in making sure the CNMI, you know, does well. And so, uh, I'm, I'm at this point committed to making the the time commitment. Um, and I was told they meet, you know, in Guam, we meet monthly. I'm told the CUC meets quarterly, but it may need to meet more often now just because there's transition, there's a bit of a crisis going on. I I will defer to, uh, uh, the team there, really, I'm, you know, I I'm a team player, right? And and, uh, I would, I will defer to the team and the chairwoman and and the shared leadership about how often they want to meet. And, uh, and if I have to be here monthly, I'll, you know, I'll just ask to make the schedule because of my CCU meets monthly as well. But we take time off and, you know, we're just 45 minutes apart. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's, it's okay.
I understand, but you know, with the, I don't know how it works because this is kind of a a different situation where we have a Guam member. But can they vote council? Do you know that's, can they vote from Guam or they have to be present?
I was told I could, a council today advised me that I need to be present.
In the CNMI, right?
Yeah, which, it's okay, I mean.
Yeah, understand, but you know, having to, uh, travel so often, especially now at a time where there's all this, uh, concern going on around CHCC and and CUC. And and so I wanted to see, I wanted to ensure, uh, the, that you are available in in situations like that and that.
And and maybe look at amending the bill because in Guam, we had, we amended the laws to allow for remote participation.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why I said the situation is different because we do have a a member from outside the CNMI. And so just amending the law in that sense could also address that concerns if you can't be physically present. Another thing is, so you are here on your own accord, yes? Well, thank you for for flying over even just to attend this hearing. Um, and I hope that, uh, if you have time tomorrow, if you're not leaving yet, the Senator, the PTC and the the Health and Welfare Committee will be convening tomorrow to meet with both CHCC and CUC. And if if you have the time, you can, you're you're more than welcome to come and sit in and kind of understand more about what's going on.
And when, when is that?
Tomorrow, um, 1:30. So if you're still with the, you know, in the, in the area.
We have a family wedding tomorrow, but.
I understand.
I mean, I'm willing to come up.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's televised too, so, uh, you can reach out, but I just wanted to extend that invitation. What about your your experience with the utility, sorry, Public Utilities Commission, is that?
Yeah, so be, um, so I've been in the, I I was on the PUC first. So, um, a a story that will sound familiar, Guam Power Authority defaulted on a bond, needed a congressional, a US congressional bailout. And the Congress said, well, we'll bail you out one time, but you need to get the senators and the governors out of rate setting. We want an independent utility, Public Utilities Commission that sets the rates and only they can set the rate. And to kind of just take the political, the 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 governor and the legislature out of rate setting. And not only do they lack the expertise, they sometimes lack the political will to make the the challenging decision to the point. And at that time, there was one senator that was continually blocking rate increases. GPA couldn't pay his bond and it was ready to default. And that just starts a domino you you don't want. Today, both utilities are are credit worthy, uh, because we we do what we gotta do and and do it in the in the right way. So I was put on the Public Utilities Commission and that's where I learned how to do rate setting. And and how do you do rate setting in a way to generate the cash flow, to meet the operational costs, the capital expenditures, and provide debt service and debt service coverage, right? And I'm sure if you've done any of your public finance here, you you know, the rating agencies look at you, how, you know, cash is everything. You know, if you don't have the cash, you're you're gonna, you're bot, you're not gonna get the bond ratings, you're gonna pay higher interest rate. And and, you know, so you you just have to, you have to be, become and and remain a good credit, right? And so I did that for the first six years and that's what really introduced me to the, uh, utility business and how to make sure it had enough cash flow to meet its obligations. And then I did that for six years and then, uh, I ran through Lieutenant Governor and lost. And, uh, uh, but it was, you know, that's, that's how I learned, learned the business. And then I went back into the legislature for a short period of time and then was voted out at at one point. And, uh, so, you know, I love democracy, even though it can be fickle, right? And, uh, but then I was voted into the, uh, CCU in 2002 and I've been there ever since. And and, uh, I think, you know, just, just be honest with your people and and and, you know, our, our people are smart. And, you know, they, they may say, I I want this, but they kind of know, right? Uh, and I think if you're just straight with them, um, they 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 understand. I mean, they balance their own checkbook and they realize that sometimes, you know, gotta pay the rent, gotta pay the mortgage, gotta pay the power bill, right? Gotta buy food, you know, I gotta do all that before I say I want to fly to Vegas and take a vacation, right? Uh, so, um, I think, I think, uh, I have very, I have all the confidence in the people at the CNMI to to do the right thing. You just gotta do the right thing in the, in the right way. And and even though it sometimes can be challenging, uh, don't, don't give up on it, especially if you know, uh, there there's, there's a positive outcome. You know, Einstein talked about, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results, right? And I I think sometimes we, in in all the islands, uh, we 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 struggle with that one piece about, well, you know, why, do we really have to change? Well, it's kind of like when your doctor says, you might be getting diabetes or you want to change. You know, if you want to live longer, you 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 need to change your behavior. And and, uh, unfortunately, in democracy, you know, they can vote out the doctor, right? They can, they can go, I don't like you and I don't like your decision, so you're out. Um, and that's, that's how it should work. But, uh, you also have democracy work where people say, okay, I understand. I don't like it, you know, but I understand you're making the best decision for the community. And, um, okay, no, I'll stick with you. And and that's what I've been, uh, successful in doing it. And at least, Sheriff, you have to fix the CUC. I I'm, I'm not the magic bullet. I'm just one member. I can give you some ideas of of how it might, how we can improve it based on a model that's just, that is just 100 miles to the south that is very, very similar. Um, and, you know, I I was talking today with CUC members about, you know, if you if you own a boat, I don't own a boat, but everyone I own that I know that owns a boat, you never leave the island with one engine, right? But right now, you're, you're a one-engine town. You can only burn oil, you know, and you have some, you have some renewables. But there is opportunity to do more. You're probably gonna have to change out that engine, uh, so that you can add more renewables. But if you get the right engine with, and then start to add the renewables, you will lower the cost of energy here in the CNMI. And if I can help you think about that and and then watch you implement it, uh, as you're so capable of doing, um, then I, then I think I I will have contributed and you most of all will have taken care of your people.
Thank you for that. And I also bring that up because, um, you know, here in the CNMI, the the PUC hasn't been established for quite some time now. And the the struggle is trying to get, uh, qualified and and interested individuals to serve. I know at one point we met with the the former chairman and there's all these recommendations regarding, um, providing some sort of payment or or stipend to try to get the commissioners interested and starting to, um, you know, giving up their time to to want to, to kind of address the situations that we've, um, been placed in regards to the 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 rates. And so I hope that's something that we can, you know, pick your brain about more also, i- if confirmed and to try and get this, uh, commission started again, um, in in bringing in, um, qualified and and interested individuals to serve.
The CCU pays a thousand dollars and for years, the PUC was paid $50, a thousand dollars a month. Well, 500 from power, 500 from water. Uh, that's when we were created and that's what our stipend remains. But the PUC, when I was there, was $50 a meeting.
Yeah.
No wonder it's hard to attract, uh, folks to it. But they finally paid them a thousand a month, but and they're looking at the port, um, they're looking at the water, power. Uh, they have, they have a broader reach, but you know, that that may be what you need to do to get dedic, people dedicated uh, to the solution. Although I will share with you that the rating agencies always say, if you're an elected board, why do you need another body to do the rates, right? And, uh, they, you know, we tell them the story, the history. But, um, there are many communities that if you, if you go to an elected board, well, that that's it. They're the elected board. Let them set the rates. well, that, that's it. They're the elected board. Let them set the rates, especially if you can't have, you're having trouble getting the PUC populated. Maybe you just say, okay, elected board, you're it. Now every four years, you're all in front of the community saying, put me back in or not. Um, and, and maybe that would eliminate, uh, the need for a PUC. So ours was imposed upon us by a congressional mandate because of a congressional bailout. You followed our model. In fact, the PUC Administrative Law Judge for the CNMI was ours, was the same one that worked for ours for many years, Mr. Porzal. And you, you just copied our law and, and set it up that way. But if you, if you are having trouble, then you know, maybe you do have to increase the stipend to attract, um, you know, you have capable people here. It's just, are they willing to give up, you know, for fifty bucks?
Yeah.
And, and the headache, uh, you know, do you, is, is it worth it? Or go to a completely elected board and what they set is final, kind of like with you. You, you set the budget, you know, and what you, what you pass is what you pass and the voters get to approve you or not, uh, every two and four years. So that may be another, that would eliminate the, the, the PUC. Cause we are, we're often asked, why, why do you have a PUC if you guys are elected? I said, eh, it's a, it's a long story.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Those are great recommendations. And, um, yeah, at this time, you know, again, thank you for, for the willingness to, to serve the CNMI. Um, I know based on your resume, there's, there seems to be a lot on your plate, but still you're having the time to assist us here. And so, uh, I think at this time I will yield, but I'm sure. And so, uh, thank you again, uh, Mr. Sanchis.
Just must see Senator.
Thank you, Senator Donald Mignone. Recognize Senator Paul Mignone.
That thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm really glad to hear, uh, Senator, that you're, uh, you were a member of that, uh, rate setting, uh, committee. And I just want to go back to, to that issue a little bit. Uh, so in Guam, can you explain, uh, who pays the most, uh, which category, commercial, government, consumer?
So right now, if you take a look at when, when we, we've done our cost of service studies and we do them on a regular basis, right? But you know, it's not like your economy changes that much, that dramatically, right? We have military, we have commercial, which is when tourism is healthy, we're really happy. And tourism is not so healthy, we're, we're less happy. But we did the cost of service study for government structures, commercial structures and residential. And when you lay out the cost of service study, it, it says, here's the commercial rate that should be charged. Here's the residential rate, here's the government rate. And when you lay them next to each other, and, and this was when I was on the PUC back in the eighties. Yeah. It said that at the time you should raise the residential rate, lower the commercial rate and lower the government rate. Okay. But at the time, uh, we made this decision and, and, you know, we, we were fairly independent at the PUC. We didn't have the governor tell us what to do. The legislature didn't tell us what we, to do. We just did the analysis. We said, well, look, why don't we have the commercial sector because it's able to sell to tourists? You know, that's off island money come, you know, coming into your economy, right? And, uh, let's export some of our power burden to our visitors. Because at least a hotel can say, you know, it's another ten dollars a room night or another, you know, two dollars on the food. Uh, they have the ability to adjust much more than, than someone earning a salary at home. You know, they can't just say, hey, the barbed one up my, I want my salary to go up. So, uh, we made a conscious decision to have the commercial rate be a slightly higher than the cost to serve the commercial businesses. And the residential rate slightly lower to, to, for the, than the cost to serve, uh, the residential customer. But it was a conscious decision after we did the rate study and, and the cost of service study. We didn't just sort of guess, right? And, and I think that's, uh, if, if, if we haven't done that at CUC, we should. Let's find out, what does it really take to serve different classes of customers? And then decide, okay, uh, this is what the rate should be. Uh, what do you want the rate to be, right? And do you want subsidies and who subsidizing whom, right? And make a conscious decision and especially, I mean, uh, here it's, uh, even, you know, we, we're lucky that we have a much larger military presence. But here, you know, the, it's the government or the residential, right? And, and, and the, the residential customer is paying the taxes for the government. And so it's still one big, still the same purse, right? And it's how you allocate.
Well, I don't know. They've done that, that kind of study here, but, uh,
If they haven't, they should.
We know that the government rate is much higher than the commercial and the commercial is, is much higher than the residential. So, uh, there's a bill actually that was introduced recently by former President Judah Snyder. This, uh, a week ago and came about because of CHCC issue and he's trying to, uh, lower the, uh, the CUC rate to commercial. In Guam, that would have been better, right? Cause that would have been an increase. But here from government rate to commercial, uh, commercial much paying or paying much lower rate. But I think, uh, uh, that's a good idea. And I ask that you really emphasize that to the board and maybe make a recommendation.
Yeah, I would do a cost of service study first and then, and then, you know, we'll present it to you and say, okay, here's,
I think that's, that's very.
Yeah. Because you're, you're funding, you know, you are the hospital and you are the government. And you take tax revenues from your citizens to fund all of that. So you're, you're two of the three rate classes, right?
I think we, we really need to look at that.
And, but I would definitely insist that they, let's, let's do a cost of service.
It's not quite the same.
Well, at least you want to know. I mean, if, if, and you want to make a conscious decision that, okay, A is going to subsidize B and not guess. I think A subsidizing B or maybe B subsidizing A. No, don't guess. Let's find out. What's it cost to serve the different classes of customers? And then we can make a, a more, uh, a decision that's based on more information. And we don't want to, we don't want to guess, especially, you know, energy is expensive, right?
So, so please look into that, Senator. I appreciate, uh, on that island that, uh, Senator Donald was mentioning, I'm, I'm surprised. You said sixty five cents?
So, yeah, if, it's so they, they outsourced it and it's small. It's, uh,
For, for, for six hundred people.
Yeah. It's, it's very small, right?
Yeah. But the price really is sixty five cents.
Well, remember they, they have to have sole, they had solar, they have a battery and the battery is very expensive, right? And so when they put the whole thing together, they, they proved it, they proved the concept. Yes, you can be a hundred percent solar, but it's sixty three cents a kilowatt hour, right? Uh, I've learned this from all the engineers I've ever worked with, right? You can engineer anything. It's just whether you can afford it, right? So you, you can try to be a hundred percent renewable tomorrow.
I just didn't realize it's, uh, that, that higher rate.
Yeah. And I, I was kind of like. Just event, so the government of American Samoa is subsidizing Ta'ou from sixty three down to thirty six. But that means the taxpayers of American Samoa are paying for some of the power bill of Ta'ou, just like the taxpayers pay for the hospital's power bill. And they're paying for their own power bill. So you're, you're sort of still in the same, you know, you, you just move the money from, you know, the left side of mom's purse to the right side of mom's purse. It's still mom's purse and mom's only got so much money.
Yeah. But where's the, the cost coming from? Is it the equipment?
Yeah. And the batteries. Because when the sun goes down at night, how do you, you gotta have the lights on. So you, you buy a battery and batteries these days, you know, it was like a, a million. Okay. So GPA, we bought a battery, a million a meg. So forty million dollars for a forty meg battery and it runs for only six hours.
A million a meg?
Yeah. And that was fifteen, no, 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 seven years ago, eight years ago.
Yeah. But this island is only maybe a meg or two mags, right?
True, but still a million dollars to the people of Ta'ou is a lot of money because there's only six hundred of them.
I'm just interested in that because Rota's challenge is really bringing the oil into the island. You know, they build like four million facility just to tie the ships, uh, to dock them, uh, at the reef. And, uh, the environment too concerned and all that. And, and not only that, they have to use a smaller vessel than that, which they use to Saipan. So it's very costly too, right?
So what you really want to do is reduce the amount of oil that any, all of our islands use, right? And so we have found the sweet spot that says, if you take solar energy with a declining cost of battery power and you get a brand new generator that can deal with intermittency, the ups and downs of renewable energy. And that is far more fuel efficient than the, the, the cavernous units that are, when you were going to high school, they, they were just six years old, right? And that was a long time ago. We've changed the technology of conventional generation to be able to interface with renewable, uh, generation. And then battery prices are, are falling, 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 falling. So we were getting, uh, it was unfortunate. We, we lost, uh, we won a procurement all the way through Superior Court at GPA. But it took so long and then COVID stepped in that we lost the bidder. But you're looking at nine or 10 cents a kilowatt hour for a sixty meg solar farm versus twenty five, thirty cents, uh, fuel adjustment charge. And, and twenty five years from now, it would only be 10 to 12 cents. It's, it's more like a mortgage. It's not like oil that does the up and down, up and down, and mostly more up than down, right? So interesting when I, when you see the study, so, um, with the right, uh, if, if we can put some solar capacity on, uh, Saipan, you'll be twenty three percent of your energy will, can come from renewables. And that's just from the study John Beneventi kind of did on the back of a napkin. You know, we, we've been, now that we're good at this, we, uh, you'll see it. And that's what got me excited. I said, really? And, and, and I asked John, I said, what happened? He's, well, you know, uh, last year was an election year and nobody did anything with it, but the, the data is pretty good. Uh, and I didn't, um, I didn't see so much, um, Tinian or Rota, but the, the concept's the same. The concept is the same, right? Get a generator that can deal with the intermittency of solar, put a solar farm in there. You know, land, land is a challenge in island environments, right? I mean, we only have so much land, but, uh, it's, it's forty acres for every ten megawatts, right? So in, and at least the, what I read this morning is if we can find eighty mags, eighty, um, acres here for a twenty meg solar farm, you can have twenty three percent of your energy coming from renewables in three years.
But I think we have ample space for.
I think so. I mean, that, I mean, that, that's, that's a wonderful project for the government is to take a look at it. Because in Guam, you know, they go find the land themselves. So they buy the land, but they are charging us for the cost of land. But we're still getting ten, eleven cent per kilowatt hour bids, even with the land. So if you, if the government provides the land, that price can be even lower. And, and I think, and maybe, maybe it'd be thirteen, fourteen, fifteen cents a kilowatt hour here for a solar, you know, because it's smaller. But it's, it's, it's not going to do this for the next twenty five years like oil does. It's going to be steady, right? It's more like a, a mortgage that you, that you know what the cost is and you can predict it. Um, and, and technology is only going to get better so that you can keep replacing. And the nice thing I like about solar is if Typhoon Simon shows up the minute after you open the solar farm, you, you turn on your generator, right? And until you put the so, the solar panels back up, you know, and, and that's why you still need both. You, you never send a, a boat out with only one engine. It's too, the risk, you know, so you're also, you're also thinking about risk management, right? And, and, um, but I, I'm, I'm confident that there are opportunities to lower the cost of energy here. Uh, if we can, uh, think about the right mix of generation, conventional generation and the right sizing of solar en, uh, energy. I've been with John Benventi for thirty plus years and he says it's doable and I, I believe him and I've seen it work on Guam. I, I think it can work. I'm, I'm sure willing to give it a try.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Senator.
How many hectares he said is needed of?
It's, uh, ten mags needs forty acres, right? And so you need eighty, eighty acres. His, his sweet spot was twenty mega, a twenty megawatt solar farm, which would need eighty acres. If you can find that for first, and he only talked about Saipan, right? And, and obviously he didn't have a chance to look at Rota or, or Tinian. But, uh, again, that's a matter that, that's where you get just professional engineers and, 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 and figure it out. Uh, you know, for each island, what, what is the sweet spot size of a solar array combined with conventional generation? You want both to be as efficient as possible, right? And some, and if it's an older generator, it may not speak renewables. Older generators run steady, you know, when you, when you, like, when you press the pedal on your car and it's steady. The good Lord doesn't listen to steady when he has partly cloudy or, or, you know, Kauai is almost a hundred percent solar. But one time they had a, a typhoon for seven or eight days. They couldn't recharge the solar panels. They had load shedding, even in Kauai, right? And they're, they're publicly owned, right? So, you know, again, there's no, there's no guarantee, there's no a hundred percent guarantee. But if you can put enough assets together in the right way and have them back each other up, um, then you can do it. Because, you know, they said, well, why are we building this generator in Guam? What are you going to do in twenty forty five when you're a hundred percent renewable? I said, well, we'll just have the generator. We'll keep fuel in the tank. And if Typhoon Simon shows up in twenty forty nine and knocks out thirty percent of your solar, turn on the generator until you put the solar panels back on. But, but you, you, you can't be an isolated grid. That's the other thing you, we all have to remember. We're on an isolated grid. So when you're looking at comparables, when you look at the United States, Oklahoma wind is being sold in California or in Florida, right? They can, they're on a national grid. They can move, uh, renewable energy around, right? Can't do it with us. We can't run an extension cord from Guam to Saipan or Saipan to Rota. I mean, you could, but it'd be very expensive. You know, engineers could design it for it.
But does the terrain of the land matter?
As flat, flat is good.
Flat is good.
Flatter, the, the, the more, the more solar you can put on it, you know? But, you know, again, uh, the, I, I think, um, each island's unique topography still, still can allow for some capacity. And I think you want to, you know, I talk about, you want to maximize your renewables, right? I, I, I don't get into the hundred percent part. I said, I'll worry about a hundred when we get to thirty, then we get to fifty, then we get to seventy, then we can argue about a hundred. But, you know, let's take the, it's a migration. It's not a light switch.
A lot of your contracts with private or?
There, it's all, um, private sector money, right? But you give them a twenty five year contract and they build the solar farm or they build the new generator. And, and, you know, the, the, the partners we've had, uh, have, they're, they're power companies that all they do is run around the world and, and become a power provider for, for Israel, for, uh, parts of Europe, you know, for, for Japan.
So you just issue an RFP and you select.
Yep. Yep. And, and, and.
It's hard to do here in the CNMI.
No, we'll, we'll share with you our, our templates, you know, and I'll do that whether you confirm me or not. I mean, I'll just, I mean, why not? I mean, it's, it's not a, you know, it's, it's, it's like trying to hide. How do you make a pizza? I mean, hey, you can, you can make a pizza, right? And, and be happy to share that. And I want to bring it over. And, and in John B's, uh, write-up, you'll see, he talks about it. He said, we'll give you the templates. Let's see what we can do here because it, we can do, we can do more and we can do better.
Okay. So maybe your challenge, Senator, uh, when you first get in is put a one megawatt, uh, solar in Rota. It's so hard. We've been pushing them and now you mentioned that.
Do you have, are there large?
Company just go there and.
How, yeah.
It's so hard. It's so hard to get CUC to put in a.
Would you have land there that we could?
We have the whole island.
Okay. Well, well.
Yeah. So, uh, I, I, I challenge you when you get in.
That's not his to give, by the way.
So, so I, I challenge you to get, if you get in there, put a solar there. I don't know why it's so hard things more than a decade to put something. Anyway, uh, I want to go back to, um, to the utility, I mean, the Public Utility Commission. Uh, so you're thinking that if, if that wasn't, uh, required by, by the feds, uh, that you would have gotten out of that? And just give, uh, CCU the, uh, rate setting?
No, to be honest, no. I, I'm, I'm glad we had, uh, I, I mean, I'm not glad we defaulted, but I'm, I'm glad, you know, they, like the story of the emperor's new clothes. Somebody said, hey, you need new clothes down there, gang. And if you're going to ask big daddy to bail you out, then dad said, okay, I want someone to set rates that is independent of the governor and the legislature.
Before CCU gets any project done, they need approval from, uh?
No. So, 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 so the PUC was created first, right? And then you still had like, like here in a, an appointed board confirmed by the, the legislature, right? Uh, but the PUC was created, uh, as part of a congressional bailout. They said, okay, we'll bail you out, but you gotta have someone, not the governor and not the legislature set rates. So that was first. That was in the eight, eighties and I was on that original commission. And, uh, but, and now the utility itself, Guam Power Authority, Guam Water Authority, when they want a rate increase, they must file a petition with the Independent Public Utilities Commission. And one other thing they did there is they changed the terms of, of the commissioners on the PUC to, to longer terms. You didn't have to resign when a governor, uh, a governor's term was over. They staggered it where, you know, you can out, they're trying to maximize their independence from political, for want of a better word, you know, interference, right? Um, and so, and so that's, that's what happened there. And but in order to get rate relief, it, the utility has to then create a, a proposal. That's what goes to the CCU or in this case the CUC. And if they bless it, then you send that over to the PUC. And the PUC then does their homework. They beat it up and they, they make you justify. And then they grant relief or, or not relief or less relief than you request. Um, and, uh, so, uh, there's two bites at the, at the rate apple, right? First, the utility has to agree and then propose a rate adjustment. And then the PUC has to agree to that rate adjustment. Uh, but I, I, in, in my many years, having been on both, uh, I, I'm always asked by the rating agencies, well, if you guys are elected, what do you need? What do you need those guys for, right? Why don't you just set the rates? And so if you're struggling to get PUC members to do the rate review of the, uh, appointed CUC members, maybe that's a model you could think about is just, just have them all, if, if you go to the elected model.
In my opinion, it's just been the past governor wanting to not have a courtroom there so that they can do what they, they want to do in the other department. But, uh, anyway, let me get back to, to CCU. Uh, CCU, um, uh, government employees can run for that office?
You know, unfortunately, no, but I, I, to me, I, why not? I, 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 why can't a nurse, why can't a fireman, I mean, it's.
But Guam, you cannot run, right?
Yeah. And which I don't agree with, you know, I.
Well, it will be double dipping, right? I mean, you get paid.
No, we're, we're paid a stipend. I mean, it's a, it's a board.
Stipend, right?
It's a community board, you know, you either appointed and confirmed or, or in our case, we're elected. But it's, you know, it's a, it's a community board. At least there was some recognition and because I would tease my colleagues. I said, hey, man, I, I gotta put up signs. I gotta, my brochures, my TV ads, right? And, but we've been a thousand a month for 20 plus years, but they finally made the PUC a thousand a month. Because they have five or six rate cases a month and they gotta do the homework and they were having trouble attracting and retaining.
So it's thousand a month for?
Yeah. And, but they don't have to run. They are appointed and confirmed.
Just one, one, one final question on, on that one. The bill that I gave you, Senator, uh, is to have two independent corporation under one elected board, just like Guam. There was a recommendation that there'd be a third one, uh, wastewater sewer. Do you, for a small community like the CNMI, is that, do you, do you recommend that? Or should we also put it together, the wastewater and?
So educate me a little bit. So here is there a separate corporation that worries about wastewater?
Oh, no, it's all one under CUC.
Yeah. Okay. So I mean.
Presently, all three are under one umbrella.
You know, the, historically, the Guam Power Authority, uh, came first and matured more quickly than the Guam Waterworks Authority. Guam Power has been, uh, an autonomous corporation for 40 to 50 years. The GWA has only been for 25 years, but 25 years ago, in 1998, they saw fit. Make it a public corporation, an autonomous entity, let it generate its own revenues. Take it out of the Department of Public Works, which is after World War II, all of ours, all of our stuff was in the Department of Public Works, right? On all our islands. So they made that decision to have separate corporations. Uh, I, you know, in six months, I can probably give you a better answer. I'm, I'm not convinced per se. I, I, I think having one board is fine. Now, um, there's, there's expertise unique to running a power company and expertise unique to watering, uh, running a water and wastewater company. Uh, we, we are the board, the governing board for two separate public corporations. So, so you can have one governing board, but we don't co-mingle, co-mingle revenues. So you, especially if you want to float bonds down the road to help build your infrastructure by your new generator. You want to commit power revenues to a, to power solutions and water and wastewater revenues to water and wastewater, uh, solutions. And you don't want to co-mingle those. So maybe that's a reason to, uh, separate the, the two entities. Because the problem I think will be if water, if the water part of the CUC needs, you know, $10 million. When the rating agencies and the potential bond buyers look at you and they go, oh, okay, water, you're doing okay, but you're losing money over power and over here on the power side, and you're all the same people, you know, that, that, that limits your ability to raise money or it makes it much more expensive. So you may want to look at creating two separate public corps, two separate purses, two separate, you know, and, and, and separate management. Because the, the, the expertise you need is, is slightly different.
That's what that bill does, but I guess my question is, should we do a third one?
No, no, I would, uh, water goes in, wastewater goes out of your house. It's, you know, one comes in a certain way, one leaves a certain way, but it, it, it all starts with the water, right? So I, I, you, you, you don't need to separate, you know, you know, the, like when you build your house, it's the same water line that, that brings it into whether it's your sink or, or your non-sink, right? So I don't think you need to separate it. And in fact, it, there's a nice synergy. Cause it's the water business and the wastewater business is just pipes and pumps and chemicals and management. That's what it is.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a short 10 minute recess at this time.
It is now three forty-five and we are back from recess and prior to the recess, Senator Paul had just completed his line of questioning for the nominee. And I'd like to take a few moments now to ask you some of my own questions.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Senator Paul had asked you earlier about legislation that he introduced actually to separate power and water but have the same board, similar to Guam. And you spoke a little bit about the merits and demerits of having that kind of system or infrastructure in place. I see the benefits of it. And of course, for every merit, there's a demerit, right? One of the merits we have in separating it, and we're still deliberating on that proposed legislation, is that CUC has been operating under federal stipulated orders since 2009. And the merit I see in that is that it was the Water Division that actually got in trouble with the feds. They were violating the Clean Water Act. But it also jeopardizes the Power Division. So we see that as a merit, and we will further deliberate on that bill to see how we can address that issue. But do you see your elected position as a member of the Guam Consolidated Commission in Utilities as a conflict to being also a board member of our sole utility corporation here in Sino-Mai?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I had it researched immediately when the governor asked me to consider it. And there's no laws on Guam that we could find that prohibit me from serving. And I'm not even a ratepayer here per se, other than when I visit, right? So yeah, there's no Guam law. Unless you're familiar with a law in the Sino-Mai that would prohibit me from serving, I'm not aware of one. But at least for Guam law, there's nothing prohibiting me.
The only thing that comes to the top of my mind would be the Ethics Law. You're working for a board on a totally separate island, a separate political entity than the Sino-Mai. So I'm wondering if your duties, in essence, would conflict with your duties here to the CUC Board should you be confirmed?
I mean, other than the time commitment, which is a valid, you know, concern on your part, I don't, you know, none of the decisions we make on Guam affect the rates here in the Sino-Mai and vice versa. I'm just, as you know, the timing was right, you know, my classmate became governor. I've got some background, and I see similar situations here that I saw and still see in Guam. And I see solution sets that have worked in Guam that I think could work here. And so to me, I'm always challenged by, I like the challenge, to see if we can make things better. And there were no, there's no legal reasons. I can't think of a, I mean, we're bound by the same code of ethics that you are, and doesn't really matter whether you're on Guam or Saipan or the US Congress or any democracy, you know? Ethics is absolutely critical. You must be ethical.
It's just maybe you get compensated in Guam the same way you get compensated here should you attend any of the board meetings. So I'm wondering, I'm just trying to explore if there would be a conflict. There's nothing in our books either.
But the only thing I would ask the CUC is, our calendar at the CCU is pretty well set. It's usually the second, we do something, I don't know if we do it here, maybe we can think about it. When we first started the CCU, we would have, we would meet just once, one day. But it became a long day because the agencies are explaining what they want, how it works, why it works, how they're going to fund it. And then you vote on it. And we then made the change after about ten years of saying, we have work sessions, and that's when we go over what does the Guam Water Works Authority want. They have a work session. Then we have a separate session for the Guam Power Authority on a different day. And then we have the formal session, you know, kind of like how you're having committee hearings now, and then you have your formal session to act as a body. We have the formal session once a month on the last Tuesday. In fact, that's why I had to juggle my dates with you because we had a CCU meeting. But we have a meeting on the last Tuesday of every month. And we've now separated the work sessions because sometimes commissioners will say, I have a question. You know, I appreciate it, Director, that you're doing this for the water system, but can you check on this and that? And they check on it in time for the regular meeting. And all the meetings are public. We follow the open government law that we made that, that actually made life much simpler. Even the work sessions are treated like a regular, open government, public session that we want the public to see. And of course, like now, it's televised, it's YouTubeed, it's Facebooked. We maximize the opportunity for our constituency to watch the proceedings and participate at whatever level, or at least be aware of it. So that's, I don't see, I don't, I don't see a problem in serving if we can just juggle the time. And then I was told they only meet quarterly, we meet monthly. And, you know, I'll defer to my, if I'm confirmed, I'll defer to my colleagues on that. I would only ask that if the last Tuesday of the month is Guam, can we make the CUC here the first Tuesday of the month or, you know, something like that? And if they're meeting quarterly, then that's even much less than the, than the CCU meets. And we take two months off. We usually take one summer month and usually December off. So, but I'm hopeful we can juggle. And speaking to Senator Paul about the laws that restrict whether you can vote by, and not, you know, while you're not present, the Council for the CUC says that's not currently allowed. So for me, my obligation, should I be confirmed, is then I just got to be here. But I don't know how you, I don't know how you can be on a board without being in the place where, you know, where your work is done. And if that means I have to come here, I've talked about coming here for some just orientations just with the CUC, should I be confirmed? I'm willing to do that. I'm inspired by the challenge, and I, and I think, I think we can, we can make things better. So I'm willing to try.
Thank you. The Sino-Mai is dispersed over one hundred eighty-three square miles, fourteen islands, with the vast majority of the population being on Saipan, Tinian, Rota, Pogon being the only sparsely populated island at any time. But presently wastewater services is only provided in Saipan. Can you lend us your thoughts or ideas on, thoughts on having those services available for Tinian and Rota?
Well, the one before the, just before we took the break, the idea of actually separating a corporation for power and a corporation for water and wastewater, I think you should look at that closely because you want both to be efficient, you don't want to co-mingle the revenues. What is the cost to provide energy? What is the cost to provide water and wastewater services? And the power company shouldn't be subsidizing the water and wastewater company nor vice versa. And until you kind of break them up that way, you're, you know, it's a, it's a challenge to segregate the revenues, right? And oftentimes, a lot of efficiencies get lost if you're not really saying, what does it cost just to run a water and wastewater company, a utility? What's the cost to run just a power company? And what's the cost to run power on Rota or Tinian or Saipan? What's the cost to run water and wastewater services on the same three islands? And really take a solid, hard, professional look at those costs, and then figure out the revenues that will pay those costs, and then allocate them. And then when it comes to allocation, I mean, that's where, you know, between the CUC, between the legislature, again, if you want to do subsidies, at least have the data. You know, okay, Saipan's willing to help Rota, you know, by paying, like in American Samoa, the main island, Tutuila, is paying the sixty-three cents, they're paying twenty-seven of the sixty-three cents. Tau is paying the other thirty-six, right? But it was better than Tau paying sixty-three cents a kilowatt hour, right? Even though they were hundred percent renewable. So, but they had the data to be able to figure out how much of a subsidy. But eventually, you really want them to stand up on their own. Or if they can't, then you at least want to acknowledge and know, well, how much do we have to help our sister or our brother in this island, right? And then you can make a more intelligent decision on the cross subsidies if there are any to be had.
Thank you. And I agree that we need to determine the, how much it costs to have a power system and separate from water in a sense that we need to analyze both financially. Like Guam, Sino-Mai has three rates, residential, commercial, and government. And I'd like to hear your thoughts because this issue between CUC and CHCC has spanned a long time. And CHCC, our lone hospital, is making an argument that, or is asking to be put on commercial rate, similar to other healthcare providers who are commercial and private in nature. Would you say that it would be advantageous to just have two rates and eliminate the government rate?
Well, the common knowledge is residential, government, and commercial. But in Guam, for both power and water, within those classes are subclasses. So in the water business, the size of your meter dictates everything. A hotel needs a much bigger pipe and therefore a much bigger meter than a house does, right? You need a six-inch, eight-inch, twelve-inch pipe and meter for a large commercial complex. A house only needs, you know, an inch and a quarter. So that's where the cost of service study kind of establishes what's it really cost to service a hospital versus serving a small clinic versus serving your house. There clearly are cost differentials, and you want to know what those are so you can set the rate class within the, you have the three classes, but within them there are sub-rate classes. And that's where a good rate study, working with a PUC, and then really the CUC can go, and the management of the utilities can go a long way to designing a rate class, rate classes. And, but it all really starts with a cost of service study. It says, what does it really cost to serve a twelve-inch customer, a six-inch customer, a one-and-three-quarter-inch customer, a large transformer customer, a medium-sized transformer customer, a residential transformer customer, you know? And those costs, once you know what they are, then you can get much more granular and much more sophisticated in what rate to charge. And then once you have that, then you can decide, okay, should this overall class subsidize? And by how much, right? I mean, that, I mean, that's, that's why you, to me, if we haven't done a cost of service study, that'd be my first questions is, where are we, do we know what it costs to serve our customers for both? And for water, it's water and wastewater. And for power, it's your power. You need to know the cost of service before you can really discuss what's the best way to charge for those services, the different classes of customers.
That makes sense, and I highly doubt we've done any cost study.
And, you know, they're not cheap, but they're not like twenty million dollars either. I mean, and to me, it's sort of like, you need to do that first, right? Let's figure out what's your...
I agree, because it informs legislation, it informs...
informs the commission, informs the management, you know, and what does it really cost? You know, and we even did things like, we got the legislature to adopt a pay scale, and we call it the Certified Technical Professional Pay Scale. If you're a certified wastewater operator, US EPA certified, right? If you're a lineman, you know, we were losing linemen to California. And so we got the legislature to pass a law that allows us, and we do an annual wage study for like-size utilities, and we look at what's a lineman make, what's a wastewater plant operator make? And we compare our salaries that we are paying to these average salaries. And in the twenty years since we've done that, fifteen years since we've done that, the average pay for the utility employees was in the fifth percentile compared to the rest of the nation for the same size utilities fifteen years ago. Today, we've gotten them up to the twenty-fifth percentile, the twenty-seventh percentile. You can't take them to a hundred percent, you know, but it's a migration. You can just move them up, but you have a basis for it. You know, you're doing regular wage studies. What's it cost for a lineman doing the same thing in Anaheim that he would be doing in Tumon? And make sure you're paying a wage that is competitive enough because we were training them and then watching them move to Anaheim. And again, attraction and retention of labor is a challenge, right? And it's even more of a challenge here. So that was another piece of the puzzle that we worked on to make sure we could pay competitive wages. And because if you can't find them at home, then you may have to think about outsourcing. And let, you know, let the private sector company worry about where does he find the engineers and the linemen? But, you know, he's going to charge you for that, and he's with his markup, you know? But sometimes if that, but if they produce greater efficiencies by outsourcing it to someone that can get the talent, retain the talent, and make a nickel, and still do it more efficiently than if you did it yourself, I mean, that's what you want to look at. You know, which way is the better way to go for the community, right?
I'm not sure if you know the history of the Sino-Mai in terms of power. Tinian was outsourcing the power generation for over ten years, and I think to the tune of three hundred thousand dollars a month. But I'm not going to get into that, but that's just some of the things you may want to know should you be confirmed. Through a transition period after the trust territory and after the covenant for the, what the United States was ratified in nineteen seventy-five, there was an agreement between the United States and the Sino-Mai to operate CUC. Actually, they created a CUC since then. And there was an agreement that three years after that, it would run at its own cost recovery. Forty-five years has passed, we have not been able to reach that yet. Can you lend us your thoughts on that? What would be your three priorities should you be confirmed to serve on the CUC Board?
Well, the first priority is to learn where we're at, right? I mean, it was, it was easy for me on Guam because I'd been in the business a long time. And I don't, I'm not here to pretend that I know, you know, I'm in kindergarten when it comes to learning the system here, but I'm a good student, and I'll study hard. Yeah, I want to learn where we're at. I'm curious about these ideas about separating the corporations for purposes of really segregating costs. And even if you don't separate the corporations, internally, you've got to be able to say, this is what it costs for power, this is what it costs for water, this is what it costs for wastewater. These are the rates to recover those costs, right? Whether we do it as one big family or as two separate corporations, the logic and the analytics are basically the same, right? So I'm very curious on cost of service. And then are your rates sufficient to cover the cost of service? And if they're not, where are they deficient, right? And, you know, there's, you can get, you can get overly sophisticated on rate design, but you can also get too simplistic. And sometimes if you can be a little more granular in the analytics, it can really help you, you know, structure a rate structure that is more true to your costs and doesn't overcharge, doesn't overcharge without knowing it. You know, that's what I'm saying. If you know your costs, if you want, then you want to subsidize, make that decision then. But first, you got to know your costs. Don't, you know, you can't, you can't guess.
Thank you. Here's also part of the history and probably informs the decision and deliberation here in the Senate that would take the position to separate CUC, but I'm not saying we are going to do that. CUC has published that only thirty-seven percent of water produced, pumped, chlorinated, is actually being billed.
That's not good.
Not good at all, sir. I agree. And so we're losing money on at least sixty-seven percent.
You're giving some people free water and others not.
And part of that is due to theft. They reported, CUC reported losing approximately two hundred million gallons per month due to theft, loss, including leaks, failed water meters. So should you be confirmed? You have a lot of work before you.
Yeah, we had a, we had a meter challenge, and it was one of the first things in our stipulated order was to get better meters. But the meters are your cash register. And if your cash register doesn't work, whether you're McDonald's or the CUC, you're in trouble. So you've got to get the meters to work right, and the technology for meters is quite good now. And so, yeah, and, you know, we all live in this community together. If you use the water and the wastewater server, then you need to pay for it because, you know, the bills are challenging enough, but I, you know, you don't want your neighbor paying, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to be paying your neighbor's water bill. You want your neighbor to pay their water bill. Well, and that works in reverse as well. And so you really want to. And then what we've learned too is when people really know that, hey, I got a leak in the toilet, and if they're paying their fair share of their water consumption, that toilet gets fixed versus if, hey, my neighbors are all paying for it anyway, what the heck, I'm going to let that thing run? You know, then everybody loses, right? So, I mean, that whole integrity of the system, you know, we snuck in a couple of french fries before the meal, but, you know, I didn't pay for the guy's french fries behind, and the guy in front of me didn't pay for my wife's and my french fries in front. You know, we just all paid for our own french fries. And, you know, you kind of have to, you have to get there with these systems. The fact that you're, I mean, if you're not billing people and they're taking the service, I mean, that, you've got to stop that. You have to stop that. Because otherwise, you're just sustaining, you're sustaining what's unsustainable. And you're seeing what is the cost of not running them properly. It's the challenges that you face now.
Thank you. One last thing, maybe. We just recently confirmed CPA, Ruffel, Tim Offness to serve on the same, yeah. Oh, sorry. He's a CPA, Certified Public Accountant, is what I meant. We just confirmed him to also serve on the CUC Board. He was the former financial, chief financial officer at CUC as an employee, and we, he has been nominated and subsequently confirmed by the full Senate. So he would be a good resource, I think, for you, and I hope you work, he's easy to work with, very knowledgeable when it comes to CUC matters. And I just, I don't have any other major questions, and we know your limitations because you haven't served as a board member yet, you're not able to understand what the situation is right now. But one of the concerns here at the legislature is the recent personnel issues that have been going on at CUC over the past couple of days at least. And I'm not going to get into that right now because we just don't have jurisdiction over personnel matters at CUC. But one of the stipulated orders, the requirements, the mandates of that is to hire qualified people, most especially in critical positions such as the Executive Director, Chief Financial Officer, and a few others. So I hope you consider all of that, you know, once you begin your term. I don't have any other major issues. Are there any other members that have any other questions? If not, it's been a pleasure, Mr. Sanchez, to learn from you about power management, water management. We appreciate your willingness to serve here in the Sino-Mai. We certainly need your expertise. And I just want to say that this committee, based on and during this hearing, we've been able to at least assess your professional conduct, your credentials certainly precede you, sir. And I, we have no doubts that you will serve exceptionally well as a board member of CUC should you be confirmed by the full Senate. And based on my observation, your persona, your demeanor will serve the CUC Board well. And I share Governor Palacios's and Lieutenant Governor Hapatang's confidence in your background, your expertise, and your educational credentials that you are the right person to serve on the CUC Board. And before this committee dismisses you for today, I want to assure you that we will unanimously recommend to the full Senate for your confirmation.
As you said, Senators, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll do my best.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, please submit the report to our Sergeant Adams that you've been alluding to throughout this afternoon.
Be happy to, yes.
And we hope you guys enjoy the rest of your stay here in Saipan.
Of course, it's, we love Saipan, it's beautiful.
Thank you, sir. You are dismissed.
All right. As you said.
This is a smart set. Thank you, and moving on to the next item on the agenda, Mr. Lanius. Does anybody have anything recognized, Senator Donald Manglona?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know there have been questions regarding tomorrow's meeting. However, we will still proceed. I know there has been changes with who was invited to speak on behalf of CUC. I know that the now former acting was the invited personnel. However, the CUC did confirm that they are sending, I believe, the current acting director, Ms. Betty Terlahi, to speak before the committee. And so we will still be proceeding with tomorrow's hearing at one-thirty with both CCC and CUC. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Donald Manglona. Senator Paul, do you have anything? If not, I just want to state that tomorrow's meeting, we will adjourn today's meeting because there is another call out for tomorrow's hearing as well. And we'll proceed with the nominees for the Marianas Visitors Bureau Board of Directors as well at ten AM here in the Senate Chamber. I would now like to recognize Senator Paul Manglona for the proper motion to adjourn today's meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we adjourn until tomorrow at ten AM. A second.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded. Are there any concerns on the motion?
Ready?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Today's meeting is hereby adjourned. It is four twelve PM.